Okay. Well, we are at two past and I know we have a tight schedule tonight, so I think I will go ahead and get us started. So, welcome again, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I am Julia Kilgore, the Senior Deputy Director at the Worcester Education Collaborative. And we're excited to have you here, joining us tonight for our District E Candidate Forum. To start the evening off, we are planning for a presentation to provide some background on the recent changes to the school committee configuration, adding the new district representation in particular. We had planned to have a presentation on this from Worcester Interfaith, but unfortunately, there was a last minute scheduling conflict, so Worcester Interfaith is no longer able to offer that presentation. And we are very grateful that Paul Matthews from the Worcester Regional Research Bureau has agreed to step in and participate with us tonight to share a little bit of information on that in place of Worcester Interfaith and them not being able to. Paul has graciously carved out just a few minutes. He does have another conflict on his end as well, but was able to to make a few minutes available for us. So I'm going to quickly turn it over to Paul Matthews to go ahead and share a bit about the school committee structure and reconfiguration. And what we'll do after after Paul has presented is if folks have questions, we can kind of collect those and hold on to them. But unfortunately, Paul will probably have to head out very quickly. So we won't have time for Paul to answer all of those questions, but we'll gather them and make sure that if they have raised any questions, that we're able to get that information over to you. So I'll turn it over to Paul.
Thanks very much, Julia, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As Julia mentioned, I have another conflict, so I'm trying to carve out enough time to do this and not sacrifice my other commitment. So appreciate the opportunity to present. Happy to address questions, though my time's limited, it might have to be afterwards. But I know Julia's going to do a great job taking note of any questions that come up that I missed. And I want to thank, before I started this, the candidates. You know, it's important to thank people willing to put their name out there and on the ballot. It's unusual in this day and age, so I want to thank the candidates for being here tonight, but also for sacrificing their own personal time in order to put themselves on the public stage. And I want to thank all of you coming here tonight to learn more about it. So just quickly, the Bureau. Let's see if I can advance the slide. There we go. Okay. So the Bureau has been around for thirty eight years. We're an independent, nonpartisan, objective, data-based research organization that's done a number of projects with WAC. You can see here from our mission and our recent report topics, a lot of them pertain to our work in educational issues with WAC. We did an excellence series last year on the school's governance, the school's planning and its budgeting. And we've also done a host of other projects, most recently reinventing Worcester. We analyzed thirty years of census data to demonstrate the changes in Worcester. So please do check that out on our website. It's particularly interesting in light of the election and the challenges the schools are facing. So we've issued a number of resources on this historic municipal election, so here are three. In November twenty twenty one, we issued an analysis so the public understood what was happening with the shift to district representation on the school committee. We issued a report in December of twenty twenty two with WAC, where we analyzed all the governance changes in the Worcester Public Schools, including what was happening on a district level with the school committee. And then in May twenty twenty three, we did an election primer for the public to understand how this election is working. So the brief history here, and I am going to move through it very quickly. It is very complicated. There is a lot more available in our reports and briefs in online. But in February twenty twenty one, a lawsuit was filed against the city from lawyers for civil rights with the NAACP, Worcester Interfaith, and ten residents as plaintiffs. There were plenty of precedents here in Massachusetts, including changed election structures in Lowell and Everett and changes that have been pending in April. So in April twenty twenty one, the City Council voted eight two to negotiate with plaintiffs. In October of twenty twenty one, they voted eight three to enter into a consent decree, which is a negotiated agreement as a court order. So as part of that, a month later, the Committee on Legislative Municipal Operations held public sessions on the three options that were detailed in the agreement. One was no at-large seats, one was at one at-large seat, and the other was two at-large seats. As I think we all are well aware today, the option that was arrived at was number three, the winning option of two at-large seats in six districts. So recognizing that this is tremendously complicated, our brief talked about some of the history coming in this situation. And I think it's important to point out that despite popular belief, Worcester in fact had a district-based approach on its school committee. Up until nineteen twenty six, there were twenty four districts. From nineteen twenty six to nineteen fifty, there were ten districts. And in fact, the nineteen eighty five Charter Commission that created the five city council districts had two members dissenting citing that they felt there was a need for district representation in the school committee, among other concerns. Then in twenty eleven, there was a nonbinding ballot question, which did fail, but it demonstrated interest in the issue from across the city. And there's been other efforts such as a report from the Mayoral Commission on Latino Education and Advancement that noted district-based issues. So the shift went to six districts, two at large, the mayor continues to serve as chair. The city had to file a home rule petition or legislation to make that change. And then in February and March of twenty twenty two, the Election Commission held public meetings to arrive at those districts. I know we're here about District E, but I trust everyone involved is equally interested in the at-large seats and how this is going to work. Incidentally, I think we all owe a huge round of thanks to our city clerk and election staff, since they're going to have sixteen different ballots for this municipal election as a result. So this demonstrates what those changes are. What you're seeing here are the school committee districts based on wards and precincts. On the left and on the right, you're seeing it across the public school quadrants. I thought that might be particularly interesting for those of you wondering how the quadrants pertain to the new districts. Now, what this has resulted in is a whole host of changes, including, as we're here tonight, three candidates in District E. And then two in District C, where the other districts are uncontested. And we have four at-large candidates, which again, all of you tonight will have an opportunity to vote on as well. We have further resources on our website. In particular, I want to stress, we have an interactive dashboard. It allows you to put in your address. It will tell you your school committee district. It will tell you where you vote. You can see the schools in the actual district that represents you. For instance, if you have kids in schools, you can check to see what district those schools might be in, because they might not be in your district. So please do check that out. And I really want to stress, the Election Commission and the Human Rights Commission have been holding public meetings. So they held their first on August ninth to talk about this election process. There are two upcoming, September thirteenth and October four. And they're offering a whole series of additional resources and outreach on this issue to try to help inform the public. Lastly, there are additional debates upcoming. The Bureau has a longstanding practice of hosting municipal election debates every two years. WAC joined us last year, particularly for the mayoral and the school committee debates. So these are the dates upcoming, where we're going to be holding those sessions this fall. I would note, there is indeed a session for contested school committee districts. We added that, recognizing that it's an important opportunity for residents in those districts to hear from the candidates. So on that note, I think I made it under the wire, but happy to address anything that might come up, Julia? Or I know I gave you some links to put in the chat earlier.
Thank you so much, Paul. Yeah, I dropped all those links in the chat. And I'll turn it over to Noe at this point to talk us through the Q and A here.
So, thanks, Paul. I really appreciate that. Do folks have any questions that they they may have? Either for Paul before he takes off, or that we can get answers to afterwards. And the answers we get, we will be sure to post them on our website, along with other resources. Any questions about the process and the changes in the process and the information Paul shared? And feel free to drop them in the chat if you'd like. Either now or later during the session. Okay. How many ballots will we get from Sheila Brenner? Paul, did you hear that?
I did, and I apologize for any confusion where I indicated the different ballots. As a resident, you're going to get one ballot. It's simply that some precincts are split. So you might, for instance, you know, your your neighbor across the street might be in your precinct, but might be in a different school committee district. So you might find them with a different ballot in your precinct. It's just going to be a little more complicated for the election workers. It should not be more complicated for those of you who are voters.
Thank you, Paul. Other other questions? We let Paul go to get back on this schedule. Okay. Thank you so much, Paul. Again, we really appreciate your carving out time for us here and joining us.
Honored to do it, and thank you so much for the opportunity. And thank you to all of you here tonight, particularly the candidates who are looking to contribute to the very important cause of public education in the city. So thank you.
Okay, so let's see, Sheila, you're saying school committee and city council are on the same ballot? Yes.
I can you hear me now? I unmuted myself?
I can.
I just was a little confused because I'm in District One. I already got my early ballot and sent it in. So I just wondered, am I just going to get one more that will have all the others? My city council, my district city council, the at-large and the school committee for my school district, all on one ballot? Do I look for just one more ballot coming?
But this is, you got the, you say you got the ballot for the for this preliminary?
For the the city council, District One. I already got that.
And so, okay.
But that was the only thing on that ballot.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering. I'm assuming I'll just get one more ballot that will have the at-large and my, no, the at-large and the school committee, since I already voted for my district city council.
So I can't answer. I can't answer that, because I am not knowledgeable. So let me let me note that down, that you've gotten you've gotten a ballot for the for District One, you said?
Yes, yes. For the city council.
City council. What, when will you get your?
I'm just wondering if I'll get one more ballot, which will have the mayor and at-large people and the school committee at-large and my district on it.
Okay, I will, we will investigate that and post results.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for sharing that. Any other questions about the process, which is different? I'll characterize it that way. And I just say, you know, Paul mentioned at the end about the 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 interactive website they created or the the portal they created. It, I think it is, you know, it's it is useful, I think, to be able to see both graphically and with information in terms of where the the districts are and where you are relation to them. So, you know, I think it's, they they do a really good, great job of creating, I think, those kinds of of tools. So definitely, if you have any questions, you should, I should, I would urge you to do that. And their other resources are really terrific as well. They're a great resource, I think, in terms of information. So I certainly would urge you to look at them.
Are they in the chat, that resource?
Yes, Julie, you put that in the chat, right? Yeah.
Thank you.
So let me, well, actually, I probably should have done this before. I should introduce myself. My name is Noe Medina. I am a consultant to WAC. I also facilitate the Worcester Education Equity Roundtable, which is cosponsoring this event and and the the upcoming forums. And I'm going to be, I'll continue to facilitate this part of the conversation. So let me introduce the candidates that we have. There are three candidates for this seat. Nellie Medina. No relation. John P. Reed and Kathleen Roy. Kathleen unfortunately had a scheduling conflict and and isn't able to join us. But I want to thank Nellie and John for for joining. Let me give you a really, really, really quick introduction. Nellie's a parent advocate and community leader. She has been involved in advocating with the public schools for her child, as well as other parents and their children. John Reed is an education professional and community leader, has a background in troubleshooting and problem solving and the dedication to student success. Let me, so what we're going to have is we're going to have a seven or so minute candidate statement by each of the two candidates. And then we're going to have a question and answer period where you can ask questions to the candidates. If you if you have a question, please write the chat. And then we will call on people to ask questions during the Q and A period. So and you can do it at any time. You can sort of start posting your questions now if you'd like. And we'll we'll present them to both both candidates to respond. So without further ado, let me turn it over to to Nellie to share her statement.
Hello, everybody. I'm Nellie Medina. I'm a parent advocate and activist, but I'm also was a former employee of the Mass Teachers Association. I did all of their ARPA, ARPA budgeting for all of the locals across the state, which was a very interesting experience. Of all the places, I went in to educate the locals. The only place I didn't make an impact was Worcester. It really opened my eyes to what's happening inside the buildings. There's not a lot of transparency in how we're spending money, and I think that has to change. And so as an activist, I thought to myself, not only am I a stakeholder, whose son walks in those buildings five days a week, those decisions that are made about education are my business. I'm a mom, I'm a current stakeholder, but they should never be presenting a budget to us and giving us two days to comment. And that was concerning to me. I also think that we need to do a better job at at supporting children with IEPs. I have a son who has special needs, and it took me a year and three months to get him accommodations. That's a really long time. We have a one team of four for fifty schools that are doing the assessment. They're doing a really good job, but I think they can do better. But I think more importantly, this is an unprecedented opportunity to represent my district. It's something I've been fighting for, and we've been talking about since two thousand and fifteen. I'm actually the plaintiff in the lawsuit that made in District Charter possible. So I'm basically walking the walk and stepping into the opportunity that I co-created for myself. It's important to choose someone that knows how to bring people together. I was proven during COVID that when, you know, the the sales get rough, the the waves get rough, I was able to rise to the occasion. I organized parents and created this parent report for with the Worcester Education Justice Alliance. We surveyed over two hundred families, and that data and that information was used by the city of Worcester to assess and determine how they were going to spend rescue funds. It's one of my proudest accomplishments. I was also able to bring parents together. We had a group of moms that numbered in the two hundreds at the end of the pandemic, and we were feeding eight hundred and fifty people a week. The important thing for me is to know that we have, our district is basically the old Jerry Mandar lines. If you put the map of the old map together with our district, it almost lines up beautifully. And we have some of the most wealthy, but also some of the most divested in communities. My district is all the way from Upland Gardens to Washington Heights. There's a lot of immigrants, a lot of people from different countries. We really need to be thoughtful about who we're sending in to bring community together. We have eleven schools. This is what I've been doing the whole time. We need somebody with a heart that doesn't represent just one part of the district, but that really understands diversity and culture. We are not the same city we were five years ago. The infrastructure that we have currently does not support all of the new people and cultures and languages that we have on the ground here today. I know that I can do the job, and I want to do it, not only as a stakeholder, but as a as a compassionate person who understands what it's like to 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 be on, to not feel included in the decision making made at the school committee. This is something that, again, that a condition that I created, something that I really want to do. I feel like I'm qualified to do it. I think that for a long time, and even currently, I'm the person that the city of Worcester and other organizations calls when they need parent input. I'm a coalition builder, I bring people together. But I think it's time to shine a light on the work of other moms and other stakeholders in the community and what it is that they feel they need for education. I'm not going to get really far anymore with the protest sign. We've done that already. And so I decided that the best place for me is at the table, deciding on policy and changing policy. The Worcester does this really weird thing where they allocate funding for said purpose. And two years later, that money's still not spent, and they never meaningfully engage our constituency. That has to change. I want to support my educators. They work really hard. Our educators should never be working two years without a contract. I think that is egregious and, you know, something that we're going to have to look back and and explain. I want to support the paraprofessionals who are in our classrooms who are understaffed. I know we're missing about seventy five. So IEPs that are legally binding documents and five oh four accommodations are not being met. That's something I really want to dive into as well. Are we meeting the standard? How many children have IEPs in Worcester Public School? We need to really suss that out so that we can know that we're we're giving our children the best community. And I say this because if there's one child in one classroom who is not healthy, the whole classroom is not healthy. So we have three classes in the building that are not healthy. The school is unhealthy, and then it translates into the community. We have to do better. Another thing is that in the district where that I will represent, hopefully, we have children who never leave their community after school. There is no transportation. I understand that Worcester Public Schools is doing a really good job. They hired more bus drivers. They have a fleet of buses, which I'm really proud that they utilize ARPA to purchase these buses and to to employ local stakeholders to take these jobs as well as train them and give them a pay bump. I think that was beautiful and the best thing that came out of ARPA for the city. However, we have a whole bunch of children who are not benefiting from these new buses or from, you know, the new structure, and we need to do better. Another thing that I think is important to remember is that we have a language, a lot of languages that that are not really represented at Worcester Public Schools. We got to do a better job at making sure that they are all represented and that we have people that are able to go into these communities as messengers and bring out whatever it is the issues are that we need to work on. Again, I don't have all the answers. I won't pretend to have all the answers. I'm going to be a good listener. I have a set of values in my platform. One of them is environmental justice. I think that's really important. I think we should retrofit all the buildings in the public schools and that all the children should have some kind of education when it comes to environment. All our children, no matter where they live in the city, should know what composting is. And yeah, I look forward to the opportunity to tell you more. There's so much more that I have in mind. Just want to say before I I end that I support the three Rs. It's one of my nonnegotiables. I think that children should know what's happening to their bodies. They should understand, you know, what consent is and what good touching and bad touching is in the name of their anatomy. And so that's something that I really feel deeply about. And then I do want to continue to replace our SROs with transformative justice, such as the Palante Program. And if you want to know more about the work that I've done, you can reach me at Nellie for School Committee on Facebook. And then I also did the Wager Report, the parent report, so you could find that at nellimedina@wager.com. And I look forward to answering any questions that you have. I know that was a lot, very passionate about this. But again, I want everyone to remember that the person we choose is going to bring people together. We need someone who's able to go into these communities and talk to everyone so that everyone feels seen. And also, I'm a stakeholder. Five days a week, my son walks in those buildings, so what happens in those buildings are my business. And so we need to send someone, a messenger that everyone can relate to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nellie, for your your passionate statement. John, let me let me turn it over to you to share a little bit about your experience.
Yes, I was born and raised in Worcester by the late Francis and Barbara Kovell Reed. I have three children, Stephen, Jacqueline, and Patrick. And yes, my son Patrick also has an IEP, and he's on the spectrum for autism. But he's also a member of the National Honor Society. And when he was in the first grade at Columbus Park, a teacher pulled me in, and I like to share the story because I love my son. They pulled me in the room and they asked me if I could just come in for a minute. And my son, he he get up there and he sang in front of the whole class. And over the rainbow type song, I think it's Kermit the Frog, I think, does it, excuse me. But this year, he turned eighteen, and he was singing in Mechanics Hall with a hundred other students. And I'm like a hundred rows back, and I could tell whose voice my son's was projecting out into the audience. And so I think that the IEPs can be very helpful because it identifies where the weaknesses are in students. In fact, if I had my way, I think everyone should have an IEP because we should go to school for what we don't know, not what we do know. And we should work on the areas like I did have with my son over the years. If you think that being a parent's patience would appease, you have a child that's a special needs student. Stubbornness turns into outright just rebellion, and it's like a lot harder. And so during my life, I've tried to improve the city of Worcester. I got thirty seven years as the senior lead information technologist at the Worcester Public Schools. When I first started, I recognized the need for more what I call boots on the ground in the department. So we went out and recruited into colleges. I went and actually took courses to college. I went and met the professors. And the program we started at Quinsig Community College has been recognized by the National Science Foundation as the best in the country. And by that, I mean, it's the only two-year school that got recognized for the program that we have. And it's the placement that so many people go on and get jobs in the field. Several of my interns and now my bosses and engineers and people much higher up than myself. And just like a teacher, you get the feeling in the school system that you've helped others achieve. And that's what I've done my entire career. I helped start a few, founder of the Park Spirit Organization, helps improve public parks. I negotiated the deal as the president with the bank on Park Gaff, that they now have movie nights in the first floor of a bank after hours. I also did a work, I started, me and my brother started the Coast Pond Watershed, which we found out, we had to extend to go to Patch Reservoir, Cook's Pond, Oldham Reservoir. And then the city and others asked me if I could go citywide and pick on Indian Lake, Lake Quinsig, Bell Pond, Leesville Pond. And I'm the president of the Blackstone Headwaters Coalition. I testified in front of a congressional hearing to extend the Blackstone into Worcester to include the headwaters. And I take credit for the fact that they did do it, and they added a center over on their holy cross. And it's the Blackstone Business Center. If you ever get a chance to see something, it's amazing going there. We have citizen scientists now that actually use microscopes, and they had to measure with different kinds of, you know, color form and different things in the waterways that so that you can see when when they're going to have blooms and other kinds of problems. I also worked with Alhambra Eighty Eight, the Grand Knights of Columbus, and I wrote an eighty five thousand dollar grant that actually helped move the Sterns Tavern over to the Coes Reservoir. And we also traveled around the state with with some of the state reps and senators, went to Mamino Park, Childstown. We went all over the windland, and we stole the best ideas from everyone. I I should say borrowed. The best ideas, and we made the plan here in Worcester. We started out with that eighty five thousand dollars. We we call that it palayed into nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We call that it parlayed into nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars of in-kind services and monetary donations. And it just, if you know, build it and they will come, you don't know what would happen. If you go over there today on any given day, I don't care if it's raining out. I've never seen a park more utilized year round than the park that we have there. And over on the beach side, I petitioned to save the beach and name it the John Bernanda Memorial Beach. And now they have canoes, kayaks and equipment behind the beach. And I say, we're not trying to put the kids in the water as much as we are putting them on top of the water. And so we can give new experiences to generations growing up in Worcester that some of us enjoyed forty, fifty years ago. Yeah, okay, I'm a little bit older, the most involved. I also involved with the East West Trail. I helped start the fire line building. Oh, I think I mentioned that. All kinds of groups, all kinds of stakeholders. I met two governors who have two of the grants I had. They came to Worcester to give them. One of them, you might know the name, is Governor Ron. He came to Columbus Park School. And the other is Governor Baker. He came to the Stern site. He came to the Workforce Development Center for Special Needs. I full disclosure, we're working with the Seven Hills Foundation on Hope App. I'm also a Seven Hills volunteer. I volunteered to help the kids over there and, excuse me, and raise money to do things. And given the fact that we all want to, all of our children to do better, I'm running for school committee. This idea that people should be stymied, that they should have people that run for school committee so they can come in and tell us what books we can, what our kids can think. How about in Florida, they even mentioned slavery benefited the slaves. They were so lucky to have that skill set, weren't they? That's insane. I think the country's gone crazy and I just want to bring just a touch, a little bit of sanity back to it. And as a technician, and I work hard to achieve goals, clearly defined and chief goals. So all the stuff I've done in the city to improve the park and expand, I would like to take some of the ideas and projects that I'm going forward on to work and work with the school department for the benefit of the kids in the Worcester Public Schools. I a hundred percent support lowering the teacher-student ratios because I consider it to be the best and number one way to improve education. My son went to an all school that was inside a nursing home. All right, they had no cafeteria, no gym. Imagine all this different stuff. They had a very low student-to-teacher ratio. And to this day, he'll tell you, his education at that school was better than, you know, UMass, Amherst, the Winter and the other programs he went after that for a double masters, one in public administration and the second in business administration. And he'll tell you that it's the student-teacher ratios, the one-to-one connection. It's the ideas. We don't have herds. We have children. They're kids. Now my butt most make sure the schools are safe. Otherwise, it's not conducive to learning. I clearly agree with my Nellie and a lot of things that she brought up today. And I don't think she knows that I was in the same situation she is. And I can understand how intimidating it is to have to go to a meeting and have several people come at you with statistics and numbers and not explain it and have you make a decision right there and then. Which this is a tip, what I always do is I won't sign it that day. I'll say, I'm going to have to get back to you on that. And it gives you a chance to bring the stuff home, look up the numbers, look up what it really means to as far as how your child is. But the I E Ps, they should really work the advantage of your son. And because it really does identify to you is my son, his difficulty is working with other children. You can't communicate. He's very shy. So that's why we got him into singing. That's why I got him into sports. That's why I did so many different things with him to get him out of the shell, I call. And so the reason I'm working and going for the school committee is because I've spent my life here. I've done so many different projects. I want to continue them. I've written over the eighty-five thousand, I ran over forty thousand dollars worth of grants for teachers over the years. Some of them as low as forty bucks. But you know what? It was just my way of saying thank you for the work that you do. The school systems, a lot of times it's called the big family. Well, it's four thousand employees, so I think it's a little more bigger than a family, but I will do my best each and every day to help the teachers, to support the staff, to protect the students and go forward in a way that's positive and reflective of not only my values, but others like Nellie and everyone else out there. When we have good ideas and things we can agree upon, we should bring it forward to the group, not as the singles or individuals. I think the people on the school committee do a good job for most part. I think I can contribute to that. So therefore, that's the reason I'm running. I don't know how much, I don't have a clock.
I've been, I've been watching you. You were just right. Both of you stopped right when you should. So thank you for, you know, thank you for your timeliness in terms of your presentations. And so we're gonna, we're gonna, we've got some questions that came up in the chat. And so let me, so let me start by inviting Kim Davenport to share her question to both of the candidates. Kim?
Hi, how are you? Thank you both for joining us today. The question that I was posing to both of you was one that sounds like this. What strategies or projects would you like to see implemented between community-based early learning providers and the Worcester Public Schools to support preschool and the transition into kindergarten?
So
No, I'm sorry.
I was an advocate. Can you hear me?
Yes.
For the Common Start Initiative, which I think is a really important initiative. I like that because it'll give more respect and higher salary and more incentive to the caretakers of our children. I think again, like with educators, we need to do a better job at respecting and acknowledging the hard work of those who are caring for our children. I'm a big fan of universal pre-K. I think it's essential for learning. My son just recently went through the program and it was instrumental for me to learn where I needed to support him going into kindergarten. I do know that the class sizes are too big right now currently at Worcester Public Schools and that our teachers are really unsupported. I've known that they've been fighting for an extra support and they've not gotten it. I know that they don't get the extra time that other educators have. I think that the attitude and how a lot of the stakeholders feel is that pre-K is not prioritized as kindergarten and first grade. However, it's the most important, I think, step. It's the first step. It's the first interaction of our students with the education system and for many of our families. I think that we have to do a better job because I know that enrollment's low at reaching diverse communities and making sure that these families understand that it's a safe place. I think there's a lot of miseducation and we got to do a better job at making sure that we, when we enforce policies such as the three Rs, that we're also giving them adequate information and continuous information so that the decisions that they make are made on information that's complete and whole. So I know that that has a lot to do with, as I knock on doors, I hear people say, I'm not going to bring my children to school or I'm going to homeschool instead of public school because of this program. So I think we got to do a better job at educating parents. And I think outreach, I think the city of Worcester, I mean, the school committee, I think they, they think they're doing a good job. But you can't reach out to organizations and expect that to constitute parents. I think in order to really, for parents to understand the importance of early education, we have to meet them where they're at. So I think we need to do a better job at outreach, assign certain parents from certain districts that are a part of certain communities to kind of go in and talk to the residents and let them know that, you know, schools are safe, that they have an option to opt out of certain programs. I'm a big fan of that, but I definitely think the issue right now that I see, there's not a lot of vouchers for parents who are working. I think we got to do a better job. We need to increase funding. I know that the governor just recently gave us more money for that, but I think that that needs to be streamlined. It's not available to everyone and we got to do a better job at making sure that everyone knows regardless of what your socioeconomics are or whether you work sixty hours or twenty hours. I think that every family should have the opportunity for daycare. If it wasn't for a voucher, I would never be where I am today. I was a recipient of that and it was very helpful to me. And so again, I think that we need smaller classroom sizes for our small children. We need to support our educators in the classroom with more educators in the classroom. I think that we need to do a better job at outreach in families so they understand that schools are safe and that they have options. And I also think that we need to be really cognizant of who we're sending in with the messages. It's all about the messenger. And again, I'm in favor of that. I don't think that children should go into kindergarten without this essential first step that's available to them.
Thank you. Thank you. John, let me, let me turn it over to you. Thank you.
Yeah, in terms of one of the ways that you might be able to get some funding for it is a lot of foundations. I went to the Grant Resource Center, the Worcester Public Library and back then they taught you how to write for grants. Reason I mention is that the budget stretched. I don't know what you have to eliminate. They had new programs right now. And one of the ways, if you write a grant and you have defined goals and objectives, when you reach those goals and objectives, you're shot for highest standard. Like Dad's classmate, J D Powers, used to say, you set higher standards, then you work to reach them and then you get recognized for it. Very simple concept, made him millions and millions of dollars. And my whole thing is that if we set it like a higher standard, you write a grant, you get it, you expand it, you categorize it, of course it's going to work. Nellie's right on it. That all kids should have it. I think it should be a right. The Pope has wrote a paper, it's called the Detto Si. And in it, it's saying we should treat everyone with respect. We shouldn't look back. We've done a lot of things in the past that were wrong as a society. But is there any reason why we can't be kind to one another? Is there any reason we can't work with each other? Is there any reason, if you look at, the reason I like the Sterns the most is there was over a hundred different groups that participated in that project. And the guys would come up to me after they did a day's work and said, this is the best thing I've ever been involved with. I'm taking my kids here this weekend. And they were looking forward to showing people the work that they did, they've done in the community. So when you bring like the Worcester rugby team or Clarks Holy Cross, they're different teams. They've helped us over at the beach when we restored the beach. I tried to stay up with the young people. I was hurt for like three days. So the whole idea, alls I'm trying to get at is we can set clearly defined reasonable goals and objectives. I think federal funding would be key for long-term for early child's head and head start, to expand them both, make them full-time, full-days and hire the staff to do it. It's an investment. When you invest in other people, it's an investment in the future. Because it pays back dividends down the road that, that really we can't compete on a global nature if we ignore the fact that the needs of our children aren't being met. I totally agree with that.
Thank you, John. Let me go to another question here. Gordon Davis had a question. Gordon, can you share that question? Or if you can't unmute yourself, I can share it for you. Okay, let me go ahead and share Gordon's question. What can you say about the MCAS high school graduation requirement and the Thrive Act? John, I'll let you lead first.
And in terms of eliminating tests that requires people to shoot for higher standards, it appears that some of it might be unfair. What I would immediately do is meet with the colleges. Say, what can we come up with to actually evaluate students when they graduate? Your selection isn't based on biases. And how could you go about doing that? Because they're going to be a vested shareholder in this. If you get rid of MCAS, what are the colleges going to do? What are the kids going to do? Are they going to get into places that they wouldn't otherwise be admitted? So I clearly think that we have to have some standards. The Thrive Act, I'm not as familiar with it as probably I should be. And I'll have to get back to you on that. But having said that, that just means that if there's another way of doing is people have come up with an alternative means of testing that's more fair and not biased, I'm a hundred percent for it. So I think that anything we can do to improve education, you know, there's a test that we have when you join the military. They call it the ASVAB test. Now, the military spent millions, I'm talking hundreds of million dollars to identify areas people are good at and the places that they're interested in, believe it or not. I think that if we're going to replace any kind of test, I'd ask to bring that test in because the kids will have a much great, better idea of what they're good at and what they like. And so I think those are the kind of things we can do to improve education. But as far as the testing goes, you're going to bring all the shareholders together with the educators and come up with a new methodology that'll work. I don't think it's unachievable. In fact, I think it's a very worthwhile goal we should have done a long time ago.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that. Nellie, would you like to respond to that question?
Yeah, for sure. So I believe that we do need some sort of assessment. I don't think MCAS is it. In favor of the Thrive Act, I think that we should eliminate the MCAS as a graduation requirement for 10th graders. Not because our children can't pass the test. Our children can if they had the same resources that every child has. It's too, the disparities between the have and have not are a barrier to our children being assessed by the same measurements. For instance, we have foster children who maybe are placed in a new home and they're in a home for a month in a new community, in a new, in a new school. And they have to take the same test and they're measured exactly the same as someone who's been in that school and in that community all their life who has been studying for this test rigorously. Another detriment to our students, especially students who don't speak English or have disabilities, is that a lot of times they can't pass the test. And what happens is if you're in 10th grade and you don't pass the test, you basically spend the next two years and it's, and a lot of them do, trying to pass the test. So whether their counterparts and their peers are, you know, excelling and doing, you know, you know, you know, doing research and, you know, complicated math equations. They're in a classroom trying to pass this MCAS. I don't think it gives them any real problem-solving techniques. I worked at the Worcester Community College, Quincy Community College. I supported the opening of the mentorship program there and I read children, you know, young people and old people talk about how bad they felt that they had to, you know, take prerequisite classes for two years because they couldn't even pass the test to get into college, which I think it has to do a lot with the MCAS. They're not prepared to go to college because they spend two years preparing for this test. I think it's egregious that children who don't speak English, who come into this country with even six months, who are bright students or not good test takers, have to take the test in only one language. I think that if it was meant to be a fair test, they would have a translation for it. I think that it was a gross negligence to hire the passing score right after the pandemic, knowing that we had a huge amount of learning loss and trauma from COVID. And so I'm not in favor of the MCAS as a graduation requirement. I do believe that we do need to assess our children, but that should be a community decision, right? And how, what would we place MCAS with? It shouldn't be a bunch of old, well-meaning, you know, ex educators at a table. We need to talk to the young people, ask them how they want their genius to be, you know, determined. And you know what they think that they can provide for us. And we'll be surprised when we sit and we listen to the young people. They usually have the answers. We just have to be willing to take it in and to implement their ideas. And so, yeah. That's what I have for MCAS. There's so much more, but that's what I have right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Nellie. Appreciate your response there. Let me, let me invite Amy Quilly to mute yourself and share your question. Amy, are you there? Okay, I will ask the questions for Amy. She would like, she asks, what are your thoughts on SROs in schools? Which I think something Nellie addressed in her statement. So she has a toddler around her, so she's understandably occupied. So let me, let me ask John to comment on this. I think you spoke about that, right, Nellie, in your comment?
Yeah, for sure. So I thought a lot about the SROs. I've been in the, kind of like in the, in combat over this since like two thousand and fifteen. And I discovered a program from Holyoke called Palante. And it's a transformative justice program, a really beautiful program that supports the whole health of the school. I think that we should not have cops in our schools. I think that we should not be over disciplining our children. There's a beautiful report called Trauma, the School to Prison Pipeline from CFJJ that kind of talks about the trauma of suspension and having police in our schools, especially in underserved communities where police are viewed as the enemies, where the police don't know who we are. I think there has to be a lot more work before we start putting community and children together. So transformative justice is kind of like restorative justice, except that it, it's not punitive. They, and not only is it good for replacing SROs, it helps children understand, you know, the impact of their actions and also how other children are feeling. I think it could be a good vehicle for LGBTQ students and a way to, you know, get everyone to the table in this circle to talk about, you know, what our differences are and how we have to be more tolerant. And so I don't think discipline or SROs is the answer. I think that we got to do a better job at bringing the community together. School is the first place we learn to interact. It's the first place we learn, you know, who we are in society. It's the place where we learn, you know, where we stand on certain issues. And so the Palante program at Holyoke, I think I'm very inspired. One student said that when he's in his community that's in Boston and Roxbury with this heavy, heavy violence and crime, that he's not afraid to walk home anymore because all day long, wherever he is, he feels like he's in that circle. And so with, with transformative justice, we're not only giving children skills to, you know, protect them at school until their behavior improves. And so they're not getting arrested, but we help them kind of, um, learn how to, how to, how to feel their feelings and how to relate to others on a deeper, more personal level. Um, I think cops should not be in our schools, um, and, and that's one of the unnegotiables for me. Um, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. John, uh, do you want to talk about the student resource officers in the schools and your position?
Oh, in terms of the world that we live in, unfortunately, this, we have student shooter drills conducted by Worcester Police in our schools. That the amount of children that have been shot dead in this country is, is just staggering. All right? And so as far as de-escalation skills, as far as how to take a moment and make it be a better moment for us. I would get the most skilled people that are there. That, that, that people don't recognize that police officers put their own families second. So they can make our families safe first. They have no desire to not make it home at the end of the day. They, they have no desire to go in and create problems in the schools. I know that some, there's tough schools out there and there's tough kids out there and maybe there's even bad cops. And I understand that, but I don't think we punish the good cops for the actions of the bad ones. I don't think we, we turn our heads away from the fact that kids assault teachers. That there's different kinds of things that do happen in the schools and people say, well, some of the kids get nervous. Well, if I was a bad kid assaulting a teacher and I seen a cop, I should be very nervous. I should know that unacceptable behavior is not the standard that we shoot for anymore. I think teachers, education only occurs if it's a safe, conducive environment for everyone to learn. And there's always some bad apples. And, and I, I think we can work with the kids that, that, and when I say bad apples, they can be, you can actually work with them and make. That's why we have the wraparound offices. That's why you have other people in the schools to work with those children. But when people go off the rails and, and there's something going down, and, and when the kids' lives are on the line, I want the best we have out there. And so if you have a secondary level, I don't think it's worked well in other countries around the country in that lots of kids have died as a result of it. But alls I'm saying is kid safety first. Consider the fact that these people have families. They live here. I, I, for example, I, I like the fact that the cops run summer leagues, a basketball league, that they do lots of different work in, in their community. I mean, look at the gentleman that lost his life trying to swim to, to get someone who was drowning. I mean, they were, they, they're good people. And, and we shouldn't let our society be turned by the bad ones that are running. So I just would, just to introduce the option that the best we have is the Worcester PD. And that, that as far as we have one of, I, I don't compare the other police officers or, or like different people in the police property perfect. But certainly the ones that I've met working in the schools, I've never met one that I would question their character or their professionals. So I just have a different viewpoint.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your sharing your perspectives. We are unfortunately out of time at this point. Um, we had a couple more questions, which we'll try to see if we can share with the candidates and, and get responses back for folks.
I answered Clyde's question in the chat.
Okay.
Pass to Talia, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, so we'll, we'll see if we can get it shared with, with John as well and try to, and, and give him a chance to respond. So we're gonna have those, uh, both afterwards. Um, and Amy had actually a couple of other questions as well, so we'll, we'll try to share those with you, with you guys and get your responses. So, uh, we have that as, as soon as possible, um, after this meeting. Uh, so I wanna thank folks for, uh, joining us. Today for this, um, discussion. Um, we, this is the, the first candidate forum that we're organizing. Um, we will have two more. We will have one on September twentieth. Wednesday, September twentieth. It will, uh, involve the at-large candidates. Will also include an overview of the, the, the new structure as well. Um, we'll then have, uh, a, a final forum on Thursday, October twelfth. That'll include, um, the, the candidates from the, the other contested district. As well as the candidates that are, are in the running for this district. Um, and, uh, then we'll also have some remarks from candidates in the uncontested seats as well. So that's the, that's the plan. That's the schedule. As, as, um, Paul shared with you, this is, there are, there are other opportunities for you to, to listen to the candidates, hear them. Hear what they, they are, believe. We're gonna have some questions we pose to all the candidates that we're gonna post on our website also. Um, and, uh. We'll, we'll let you know when that's posted and available. Um, Julia, any, Chris, any final, uh, comments or thoughts today before we close?
Nope. Just, I just want to say thank you again to everybody for, for being here and participating and to our, um, our candidates that were able to join us. And, um, we did also extend the invitation to Kathleen Roy, who was unfortunately not able to make it. I think Roy mentioned due to other commitments, but, um, happy to have everybody engaged in this process. And, um, or to seeing you on our future events as well.
Thank you.
Nellie, John, thank you for coming. Everyone who, who.